Good evening and welcome to the Shelburne Planning Commission meeting for October 12, 2017. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. We'll consider a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. Moved by Jason, seconded by Perry. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Our agenda's approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the amendments for October 28, 2017. We'll consider a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Jason.
Second.
Seconded by Andrew. Any discussion?
Uh, no. Just one typo on number nine, but that's it.
Page three.
Which one?
Oh, wow, Jason. Pick up.
I call that listexia.
No other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Our minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is disclosures relating to any potential conflicts of interest with respect to any agenda items. Anything to declare? Seeing no hands, hearing no voices, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is open to the public. Seeing no bodies other than Casey here, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is a discussion of two subcommittees that we have developed, the first of which is the Housing Subcommittee. So, to tee this up a little bit, we... The Housing Subcommittee was formed... Help me out here, Dean.
About a year ago.
A little over a year ago, right?
Yeah, well, there was some discussion about creating it, and then it was finally created just after Ron stepped down. So, yes, it was March.
Correct, okay. So, the Housing Subcommittee's initial real mission was to develop this, what we've called the Housing in Shelburne booklet, really a resource for not only the Planning Commission, but other boards and committees and other stakeholders in town to really leverage data relating to housing trends and metrics in Shelburne that is now complete. Happy to report that it's been completed. It will be... Oh, it's on the website. Excellent. It's been published on the website, and the Housing Subcommittee members have graciously agreed to continue their service to help us out. And as we've thought about the next iteration of their charge, what we kept coming back to was the rural district, an opportunity for us to just take a deeper dive. It's a section of the town plan that we've spent a decent amount of time on. We intend to spend more time. And we felt that having an extra resource was really a luxury for us to leverage. And we'll... We've included what is a revised charge in your packets, and it speaks to really the expansion of the scope of the Subcommittee's charge. So, wanted to just discuss that, try to align on those changes so we can formally adopt the amended Housing Subcommittee charge, so to speak. So, why don't we... If everybody's had an opportunity to look at it, if there are any questions, really all we've done, as you can see, is essentially, under that other task item, be really outlined what we're looking to do, collecting, collating, analyzing information specific to housing in the rural areas of Shelburne. Identified two activities. It's not an exhaustive list, but we talked about hamlet development extensively. We'll talk more about that. And then TDRs being the two areas where, let's call it focus areas, for that group to think about. And then a couple tweaks as far as just the open meeting law and...
So, the fact that the hamlet development is one of the subbullets is something that's just going to be explored further. It does not mean that this is what we're kind of putting in...
Correct.
...in terms of the rural overlay district potentially.
Correct.
It's just kind of deeper dive because...
I think, yeah, I mean, I think my impression is it's because it's an area where we've spent a significant amount of meeting time and where I think there's still learnings to be had to explore it. So, having that resource to help us flush out what do we mean by hamlet development in the rural district, more on the data side of that versus really a policy-driven decision by the Subcommittee. Again, these, you know, investigating the potential for was gives me enough comfort to make it clear that it's not a directive to move forward with hamlet development in the rural district. But if it reads differently to anybody, let me know because we can tighten that up to make it clear that it's an exploration versus...
And it's something we could...
A direction, let's say.
After the plan is done even, we could go back.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it'll be a resource for us to tap into at any point in time as that conversation evolves, I think. Who knows where it will go as far as the town plan changes go with respect to hamlet development? And it may end up just being a recommended action that we develop as part of that change, but this could be a resource for us to actually take action, to use, help us figure out what we mean by hamlet development and study it and pressure test it, right, within the So, that's really all we're looking to do to update the charge here. Any questions from others or people feeling comfortable with the updated charge generally? Okay. We probably should formalize that with a motion. Do you agree, Dean?
That's how you did it last time.
I think we should. Yeah, I think we should.
Be consistent.
So, I will consider a motion to approve the revised Housing Subcommittee charge as amended in the packet.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Jason.
Second.
Seconded by Andrew. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. We have a 2.0 charge here for our Housing Subcommittee. And segueing into, we've had a vacancy on the Housing Subcommittee for a number of months here, and it's taken us a little time to fill it. We've, again, very fortunate in a town like this to have residents put their hands up and volunteer, and we've... We had a number of extremely qualified, overqualified candidates put their hands up for this. And happy to report that Casey McNeil, joining us tonight, will be joining the Housing Subcommittee as its newest and fifth member. And I invited Casey to come in and just say hello to the group, to put a face to a name and to allow the commissioners to say hello, ask any questions, and wish you good luck in this next venture for you. So, yeah, I mean, we'll work through the introductions to Ron and the rest of the Housing Subcommittee, but I did inform Ron that you will be appointed this evening, and he's very excited to get you on board and roll up the sleeves and start going. So, I don't know if there's anything you'd like to say to the group. I, of course, have spoken to you. I have your resume. I can share that with the commissioners here just for awareness. Casey has a very impressive background. He is now with National Life after working with Merchants Bank and KPMG. And you've been in Shelburne how long, Casey? Maybe you could just take the mic just for the... Our viewing public's benefit.
Is it on?
Yes.
So, I've been in Shelburne for a year and a half.
Excellent.
Yep. And just started redoing our house up on Pinehurst Drive about a year ago, so I've worked with your office quite a bit.
Good.
Trying to get some permits. But, yeah, so I was interested in the process, and hopefully my background can help.
I think it'll be a great asset. I think, in my opinion, it's great to have the voice of a different generation on that Subcommittee as well to just add a different perspective, as well as somebody with your technical chops on the analytical side. I think it'll be a great resource for that group to tap into, and I think you'll learn a lot as well. Honestly, as I said, you have two former Planning Commission chairs on that Subcommittee and another Planning Commission, former Planning Commissioner, so it's a great group. We're lucky to have everybody still involved and excited to have you on board to complete the ship there.
All right. Well, thank you, guys.
So, I would... We'll formally appoint Casey McNeil to the Housing Subcommittee for a one-year term effective as of October 12, 2017. Thanks, Casey. Look forward to working with you. Next, Dean.
And just to be clear, are you... You're making a one-year appointment rather than filling the remaining part of Tracy's? I just would be worried about having too many different times to be appointing and reappointing.
Didn't think about that.
Dean's guy either.
Yes, you do. Let's withdraw that appointment, and let me reappoint you for the remaining term of Tracy Bowden's seat on the Housing Subcommittee, which expires next April, I believe.
Yeah, I think that we...
Through April 1, 2018, at which point we'll make the reappointments for all five Subcommittee members, assuming everybody's still willing to continue. Thank you for the clarification and...
Or you can just make it a year and a half or something like that.
No, let's just sync it up with all the other one-year terms, and that will be easiest.
I think it's better, yeah, this way.
Thank you for pointing that out. Next item on our agenda is moving on to our newest Subcommittee, which is an Energy Subcommittee that we started to develop ideas for pretty recently, a meeting or two back. We've spent a significant amount of time on this section of the town plan as well, led by Jason, and identified it as an area where we could use a little bit more support and resources, again, on the quantitative analytics, data research side, as well as helping to identify maybe some specific trends that would help inform our update to the energy section of the town plan. We've included a draft proposed Subcommittee charge for the Energy Subcommittee in your packets. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to look at that. I think this captures the input from our last meeting when we started to sketch this out in real time. Wanted to take a little bit of time to confirm that, to see if there are any further edits, anything we missed in here that we might want to include, any reorganization, anything that we should consider changing before we get to a point where we formalize this Subcommittee and then move forward with appointments to it. So, with that, I will open it up to my fellow commissioners to weigh in on our draft Energy Subcommittee charge.
Just had two thoughts. One was, did we want to call out micro wind specifically or use that as part of the fifth bullet?
Let's see.
That was my question as well, because that was one of the many kind of subareas that we discussed.
Right.
And just roll it in.
Yeah, so in other words, after technologies, comma, such as micro wind.
And if there were any other specifics that we wanted to look at, I know that's one that had certainly been discussed. Just figured it was part of that fifth bullet.
Yeah, I think that's a good change.
And the bullet after the fifth one, so evaluation of techniques, was just a little too vague for me not having been part of that session.
What... I didn't know what that meant, what techniques, like...
Should we say renewable energy techniques to... Let's see.
When you say technique, is that like wind versus solar versus something, or is that...
Does anybody remember if that was something that I seen? I'm crazy.
I can't quite recall either. Yeah.
Well, there's...
I can imagine Haseem saying that, technique.
Right. Or like...
Techniques.
Or you could say modeling techniques, because there was a lot of discussion around...
There was talk of modeling.
Just modeling and what's included.
Yeah, it was so vague, I didn't know what.
Let's say that. Let's say evaluation of renewable energy modeling techniques.
Okay.
Everybody comfortable with that? I thought we should move after the second bullet where we say analyze and review. I thought we'd just move up that last bullet behind that where we say review energy sections of neighboring town plans, just so those are a little more logically sequenced.
So, it would be the third.
Yeah, make that last bullet the third bullet. Move it up. The other thought I had was when we talked about information sharing. I... In my mind, I felt like Shelburne Community School could definitely tap into this. It's not necessarily a town entity, but...
Education.
Part of education.
Yeah, right? I guess it would fall into education. And the other proposed change I have is to expand the number of members to no more than seven. So, that first sentence would read, "The Subcommittee will consist of no more than seven members." We've, again, very fortunate in this town to have people who are willing to get involved, and I think we have a number of interested and very qualified people to jump in on this. So, I didn't want to constrain us unnecessarily with a number that isn't meaningless, but you don't necessarily need an odd number on an advisory committee. So, if we have six, that's great. If we have seven, you want it manageable, but I felt adding a couple more people might be a good thing if we have people putting their hands up. Absolutely, yeah.
Yes.
If people are willing to jump in and get involved.
Because then we can get a micro wind analysis done.
Yep.
So, we'll be presenting them with a list of questions that we have that we would like answered it.
Think, yeah, I think we have to talk through that, how we get this kicked off formally. Once we have the Subcommittee formed with all the members appointed, I think it will be important to make sure that they have clear direction on the priorities as well as what our expectations are for deliverables. Where do we want them to get started first? I think it's reviewing the town plan, energy section itself, and then looking at neighboring energy sections, just to sort of see...
Do we know who some of these folks are?
We have a list, we have a running list of prospects that...
Did you get my email?
I did get your email this afternoon, and what I am intending to do is to just send a group email asking them, you know, essentially...
Are you interested?
Are you interested? You know, you've sort of come to my attention as...
Ten or 12, hope to yield.
Yeah, it's seven or eight, right? Judy Raven has put her hand up as being interested and willing to do it, so I will appoint her, and she's accepted that. And the remaining, there are seven other, eight people.
Yeah, I have the list on the computer.
Yeah, do you want to... Let's, yeah. Would you guys like to see it? Okay, let's put it up. I mean, you may have other ideas and suggestions and...
No, I think the names I threw out, Dean, aren't...
I think we captured those, but let's make sure before I send this email out, I would like to make it as inclusive as possible and make sure we're not missing anybody because we have really...
Do you want us to try and reach out to some of the folks we might know ahead of time to sort of...
I think...
Run the pumps, so to speak.
Yeah. I think that would be tremendous if you can do that.
I'm happy to do that, I just didn't want to...
Yeah. No, 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 not at all. I think it'd be great to have that connection. So, that's our list.
Yeah, Jeff will be great.
Yeah, that captures the three I know.
Yeah, I mean, again, we don't... We don't know if everybody is necessarily interested...
Right.
...in doing it, so it's a prospect list in that respect. We're hopeful that we'll get a good response from it. If for whatever reason we don't, then I would probably just put a note on Front Porch Forum and encourage everyone here to do that, to just get the word out. Doesn't necessarily need to be on Front Porch Forum, but start to communicate that if we're looking for candidates to appoint to that Subcommittee. That'd be great.
The other bonus would be that some of these folks that I know might also be, you know, no, I can't, but here's...
Exactly.
Here's another name or two as well.
Yeah, exactly. So, I will push that email out tomorrow once we have this Subcommittee formed, and from there we'll just hope for a good response, and if not, then we'll make sure we get a sufficient quorum to move it forward, and then I think probably at the next meeting maybe we'll zero in on that first, what are we looking to do from a priority perspective with this Subcommittee?
What would be the fewest numbers you think would be worth...
I think, so if you have seven, you'd need four.
For a forum?
Yeah.
That would be the forty of the five.
Yep, you'd need four.
Kind of has some advantage having a little smaller commission.
But, I mean, if we only got four, we could get going. We could fire it up with four.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. You're right. Let's see. With those edits, anything further to tweak here?
Just looking over this one question, the original third bullet, looking at potential co-locations of energy devices on Route 7. Maybe I need a memory jog.
Yeah, so this harkens back to some of the work we had done on the telecom section of the town plan, which is in the energy section, correct?
Telecom...
It's not.
Not in, not located within the energy section. There's a telecommunications...
It's a separate section.
Paragraph on telecommunication participation in the land use section, but it's not, it has not been a standalone section just on telecommunications.
Right.
It would fit in the utilities section, which is part of growth, which we haven't gotten to yet, but...
So, the co-location of...
This is more just like infrastructure citing.
This is more infrastructure citing, right? Is what we're contemplating here, more solar facility co-location on...
Yeah, I think this grew out, I think it grew out of one of Kate's comments about the potential for energy generation in the Route 7 corridor, possibly using existing...
Buildings.
Yeah, buildings. And she previously had been looking at the possibility of location of electric and telecom together.
Mm-hmm.
Isn't it?
Does that satisfy you?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Good. Okay, why don't we move this forward? Did you capture those edits? Okay, great. I will consider a motion to approve the Energy Subcommittee charge as amended this evening.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Jason.
Second.
Seconded by Perry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have an Energy Subcommittee. Excellent. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item is a discussion of the draft capital improvement plan. This is an annual task for the Planning Commission. It is in, it's a statutory, not an obligatory requirement, but the Planning Commission by statute, 24 VSA 4443, empowers us to essentially review and advise on the capital improvement plan for the town. And this evening we have Peter Frankenberg, our finance director for the town. Thank you, Peter, for coming. Any further intro, Dean, from your perspective?
The only thing that I was going to say is that this is the third year, I believe, that this opportunity has been formalized. And then, are the lights okay? Do you want, do you want me to try to get the light so it's a little bit brighter? Or, I don't know how many slides Peter has, or if they're fairly detailed, it maybe, yeah, maybe a little bit.
Did we get a copy?
Peter's presentation was not included in the packet because it wasn't available at the time of the packet.
Right, yeah.
But it was, I believe, emailed separately.
It was emailed separately. I have it. I can share it.
But I can make sure that you get it again.
Actually have extra copies.
Peter's got copies.
As you saw in the packet, we, the Planning Commission has provided a brief memo to the Select Board, just identifying a couple focus areas, items of interest from the Planning Commission's perspective or comments. That may or may not be the intent of the Planning Commission necessarily, but it's an option that we can consider and can replicate if we decide to do that. So, with that, Peter, I will, I'll turn it over to you to walk us through the highlights of the new capital improvement plan, or at least in draft form, let's say.
Sure. Yep. And thank you for setting aside time on your agenda to go over this. As Dean and Jamie said, this is an annual process we go through each year to update the capital improvement plan, also referred to in statute as the capital budget and program. So, there are some guidelines by state statute that we follow with it. In terms of what is the capital budget and program or capital improvement plan, it's really a six-year plan of capital projects, starting with the current fiscal year that we're in right now and the following five years. So, every year we update it, another year gets added on as we've completed the year. This draft has about 112 projects in them. I'm not going to go through all of them one by one. Arrange a price or costs, our threshold, minimum threshold of $5,000, and going up to six and a half million dollars, which would be, in this plan, would be the library expansion, town hall renovation project that's up for bond vote. Projects, I guess the thing to highlight is just because something is in the capital plan, it doesn't mean it's automatically going to be done. That's obviously a six-year plan. The only projects that we are committed to doing are in year one, which is the current budget year that we're in right now. That's funded either with the current operating budget that we have in place for the town, water and sewer, or by bond issue that's been passed. So, the projects in years two through six are not funded and are subject to change as we go through revisions each year. Projects come and go, so that's kind of a overview of it. On the purpose of the capital plan, again, it's really to try to provide a long-term view of what projects department heads and committees and so forth are thinking about so we can try to prioritize and develop a plan to implement them. It also tries to spread those projects out over a time period so that you're not doing a lot of large expensive projects in one year, but to try to spread the costs out so that you don't have large fluctuations in water sewer rates or in tax rates and load it into one year. Third reason is by statute, if we do adopt impact fees, the projects that we adopt them for have to be part of an approved capital budget and program. We do have, we do currently charge impact fees in two cases, one for recreation facilities and one for the Seaview expansion that occurred several years ago. So, those are part of a building permit cost and included there that the planning and zoning department collects. In the Seaview case, we turn those over to the school district. They go towards the debt service for the Seaview expansion that took place several years ago. And recreation facilities, what that's supporting are bond issues that we have for recreation fields expansion, the Harbor Road fields that were constructed. Impact fees are helping to pay for those. And the second component would be bike ped facilities. We're collecting impact fees for some of those projects that have been done. Another purpose of the capital improvement plan, again, if, for grant applications, it's certainly a good supporting point to say this project has been in our capital improvement plan for several years. It adds credibility to it, that it's not just a project that came out of nowhere, it's been thought about, it's gone through a public process and adopted as part of our long-term plan. As Jamie and Dean said, why are we talking about this with the Planning Commission? By statute, the Planning Commission may submit recommendations annually, as we said, and that will also be in conformance with the municipal plan. So, it's an opportunity to provide comments about the plan and any recommendations that you have. Definition of capital projects, by statute, physical betterment or improvement, studies relating to capital projects, land, rights in land, does not include personnel costs, does not include renovations or things like that. It's really new improvements and things like that that you would see, probably logically what you would think a capital project really would be. This version of the capital plan that we're looking at right now is $26.1 million over the six-year period. That's broken down into the general fund, which is the town budget that you vote on paid by taxes. Stormwater is a new item, and it's kind of appeared in discussions recently. We do have about $1.7 million in projects for that, mostly related to the Monroe Brook watershed. The water department and sewer departments have their own budgets, so they are included as two different categories as well. So, that's just an idea of the... So that's just an idea of the breakdown over that period.
And can you just start to interrupt, Peter?
Sure.
Can you just point me to where that twenty-six million ties back to on the plan itself?
Yeah, if you look at, it would be the first page with the.
I got it.
With the summary on it.
Twenty-six point seventeen, okay.
The total column, and that's broken down, general fund, water and wastewater.
Got it.
So.
And the sequence with the, the capital plan is locked and then the budget is set? Is that the sequence or is it the other way?
Yeah, the sequence that we're following is we're adopting it now. We'll be moving into our budget discussions within the next several months for the upcoming budget year eighteen nineteen. We tell department heads, if you have a capital project that you want to include, it should be in the capital improvement plan so that it's not a surprise when, when you come to budget time. So yeah, then it would be brought in probably as the first draft of the, of the town budget or water budget or wastewater budget, which are adopted later on. And at that point, the governing body, whether it's the select board, water commission or whoever, would determine whether it's, whether it's, it's a priority to include. So again, just because it's in the capital plan, it's not a guarantee that it will actually be funded. But that's the sequence that we truly follow to, to go in with the general fund budget when that gets adopted.
Quick question. You mentioned year, year one's funded after that.
Not so much. If something is in year two versus year four versus year six, it's in year two means it's a little higher priority than something you've pushed out to year four or six?
The statutes do state that we need to prioritize the projects and we do that by chronologically. So the ones that are in the early years have probably been thought about more than the ones that are in years five or six. So yeah, it's a good question. That's, that's how we basically try to do it. And one of the things that became very clear to me as in looking at the town plan and that sort of thing is if you're adopting a town plan and it has capital items recommended in it, there should definitely be a linkage between the town plan and the capital improvement plan. So one of the things that we do look at, and Dean had prepared a list a couple of years ago of items in the town plan, the adopted town plan, that had capital items associated with them. And that's, I think that's a great thing to, because really the, the town plan is your starting point, but then the funding actually comes in when the budgets get prepared and the capital improvement plan is one of those tools. So it's a way to make sure that those projects do get scrutinized and hopefully come to fruition. And just some several points here about items, the projects that were mentioned in the comprehensive plan and are in the capital improvement plan. The first one, capital, the town plan mentioned the need for a connection between the Shelburne Museum grounds and the village center. And that actually was completed this year. The connection between the village center here and on the west side of, of Route seven, completed this summer and is in use. That's a good sign. It shows we're, we're adopting the items in there. So I think that's critical.
I agree.
Also, improvements to the, the town plan mentions improvements to the pedestrian circulation system in the village center. That is a project in there. It's in year four. So again, priority wise, that's not right at the front of the list, but it is something that we do put in there for falls road, streetscape improvements, pedestrian improvements and things like that. Town plan also mentions that the priority projects identified by the paths committee should be given priority. And we do have a couple of projects that are their priorities, connecting the Rivercrest development off Irish Hill Road down to the village center is a project that's in there for eighteen nineteen. And I know there was a grant application. I don't know if that's been.
We have heard that we did not get that grant.
Okay.
Joe had not informed you.
So it's still in there. Wills continue to be in there. I know it's a priority for the bike ped committee. And then also, another priority for them are improvements along the Bay Road corridor, connecting the fishing access to Bay Park with a gravel path. So some of the small projects, shoulder widening, things like that. So we've got that in the plan as well. The town plan also references priorities, given to priority street highway projects. We do have the Bay Road Bridge in the plan. It's in for year three. We're assuming grant funding for that. But that's a project that has been in the works or been discussed certainly for a number of years. And another one that was added this year to improve the Bay Road underpass section, railroad overpass goes over Bay Road. That's in year six, so that's just kind of appeared recently on the plan, this version. But something again that we'll be, that we'll be looking at. But again, the point being, there should definitely be a connection between the, between the adopted town plan and the capital improvement plan.
Question.
Sure.
For two, so like something like that, the Bay Road underpass, it's put in year six now, but if it suddenly gains urgency across the town for various reasons, in the next iteration, it could bump up a year. It doesn't move up a year at a time. It could jump ahead.
Right, and we revisit them every year. And a year from now, someone may say that's not feasible. We've got other priorities that may not show up next year. We've had, we had a ladder truck in and out of the capital plan for probably four, four or five years. And now we bought one, it's in the station. So yeah, projects come and go as we, as we go through it.
Can you, I mean, just as an example, on that note, I'm interested in the year-to-year, for example, the Bay Road Bridge. Has that been static? Has it been a year-three priority for three years in a row? Or is it moving?
It's probably been a couple of years out, I would say. But I think in terms of the work that Angianda and Joe Colangelo have done, they feel that that's a reasonable timeframe now to get a grant for that. And that's what they would be looking at, to have grant funding for that. So I think it's, it's, in their opinion, it's a realistic timeframe to have that project hopefully happen.
Because it's so heavily grant-funded?
Yes.
Right.
Peter, when we do the underpass, will we be going to the state to see about money or the railroad?
I'm assuming all other funding opportunities would be, would be investigated certainly.
Does the railroad actually own that?
I'm not familiar enough with it.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
Other priorities in the plan, the sort of the big-ticket items, stormwater, you're all familiar with that. We do have that in there over the six-year period, one point seven million dollars. The library, town hall and town center site improvements, that's up for bond issue, is in there. In the wastewater department, you may recall, there was a three million dollar bond passed a couple of years ago. Chris Robinson, the superintendent, is working on plans there to do improvements to the collection system, not an expansion, but replacing lines that have corroded or, or in need of replacement. And also pump station upgrades that'll make the flows more efficient on the system. He's also looking longer term at a, at a interesting project of looking at the feasibility of consolidating the two treatment plants. As you know, we have one on Bay Road and one on Harbor Road. That really adds to our costs when you're running two, two plants to staff them and so forth. So the thought is, would it make sense to consolidate them? That's not gonna happen with, certainly within this five-year, six-year plan, but it's certainly worth consideration to see if that's something that could be feasible down the road. So that's part of what Chris is looking at as well. Water department funded by the water user fees, pretty much focused on replacing existing lines, no real expansions, but types of things that you saw on Spear Street where you've got lines that have corroded and maybe have more than their share of line breakages, to try to prioritize those and to replace them.
Can I just ask a question on the, the Monroe Brook funding?
Flow restoration plan?
Yeah, the, the seven forty-five we have in there. Is that, is that adequate? I mean, I know we have.
The, the time period for the implementation of the flow restoration plan, I believe, is twenty years total.
Okay.
So it's, it's, I think anticipating using more towards the twenty years than six. So it's not, yeah, it's the start, but Peter can probably.
I just recall when we had the Stormwater Summit, maybe a year ago, maybe a little bit more?
It was October.
About a year ago.
October.
Yeah, I mean, we had just, I recall us identifying this as an area where we may not be putting enough resources against it.
I think the.
And that's all I just wanted to get a gut check on, is that sort of reflects?
The total cost has come down somewhat from the original estimate, but it's still a big number and, and yeah, Dean's right. This is a, this is a six-year plan. We're just barely getting off the ground now with the funding mechanisms and things like that. So that'll be a line or an area in the plan that certainly you'll probably see some differences next year. But yeah, the, the plan is not to do everything all at once, but to spread it out over that the time period that the regulatory requirements would have in them. So, so that's, that's an overview. Again, the, it's up for a public hearing at the select board meeting on October twenty-fourth. Certainly, we would welcome the planning commission's input on it. Particularly, keep us honest on making sure we're linking it to the, to the town plan. I think that's important and it's a very beneficial way for the two, two areas to work together, so.
That's great. Thank you, Peter, for, for the overview. Would it be helpful for, I guess, the expectation as far as comments back to the select board, the timing on that? Is that something we should try to pull together this evening as far as initial reactions to the, the draft comprehen, the draft CIP? Or do we want to approach that a different way? I don't know if I'm asking you or if I'm asking the group collectively, but we have, over the past couple of years, submitted comments on it. So to the extent that we do have input on this draft, we should try to memorialize it or at least capture a few bullets similar to how we've done there in the past.
If the consensus is clear on whatever additions or changes to what you've said, then I'll execute it, you know, if you.
What's the best process to do that as a group, though?
Right, I guess that's what I'm asking, is it?
Email ideas to Dean and, you know, discuss it the next meeting?
Well, the next meeting is the twenty-sixth.
The twenty-sixth. When's the public hearing? The twenty-fourth? Right, so that won't work?
And we can't do a lot of, how much coordination can we do to the?
Could do a, we could, well, we can ward a.
Yeah.
Open meeting laws, I mean, if we're.
You, you can hold a special meeting with forty-eight hours' notice and you could do it by phone and if it was something that rose to that.
Jimmy, how have the comments been received by the select board the last couple times? Comments have been provided?
They've been accepted? I don't, I can't really speak to how our specific comments have informed prioritization of specific projects necessarily. Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at a couple of these. Some of them are more high-level, exploring, you know.
Because on like a project-by-project basis, these, as you're saying, are coming from the various departments within the town as these are the.
Right.
Okay.
And do things like, there was, you know, a article in the free, in the Shelburne News today about the tasers and body cams that were, money was donated by citizens to fund that. Does that fund that whole line item?
It does initially, doesn't for all six years.
Okay.
But at least for year, the first year and a good portion of the second year, there's funding currently for that.
Got it. Just as an example, one comment we had submitted, I guess, two years back at this point was updating the wetlands inventory with more contemporary mapping techniques. I don't think that ever made it, that never translated into a specific line item.
There's a reason why that couldn't go on.
Did it not rise to the minimum level?
Well, there are, it has to be done in the context of a capital project. So I think, you know, I think arguably the, the creation of the maps, if they were in excess of five thousand dollars, but Peter would be able to give a better opinion on that. And the same thing goes for the surveys. To me, I can justify it if there are questions in the survey that relate to a potential capital project. But as far as whether or not the wetlands map request was considered by the select board and how they discuss it, I, I wasn't there, so I don't know.
Right.
Do you have any recollection at all?
So that's the answer to your question is, we don't know.
I think it may have been brought up in the context of whether or not it was a capital project by definition. We discussed it last year and we didn't, we didn't enter it again because.
We, because it didn't rise to the level of a capital project.
I mean, in terms of the amount, is that what you're saying?
I'm not sure why. For some reason that we did not submit it last year. I can remember the discussion, but it's been like something I've been after for a long time. I think it would help us a lot what we're doing now, especially in the rural area.
Okay. So why don't, if commissioners have individual comments, they can certainly flow them to, to Dean and/or myself to communicate up, which we can put together in a, a brief memo, assuming we have a couple of comments or questions come in. Does that work for everybody? We can just reach out individually if you have input? Okay.
A quick point on the opinion surveys. Is there, I know, Dean, your comment was more around if there are opinion surveys that relate to a capital project that is of a certain amount that might qualify? I think that's.
Well, I, I'm not sure that I would give up on the idea that if the survey is done and it has elements that would lead to, as Peter's list showed, greater than five thousand and it can include a study leading to a capital project, I would consider a survey can be part of a study. And if that survey has questions about a capital, I think, you know, unless it's just a, just an incidental, incidental question. So the issue is, will the survey actually have questions about capital? And I would think that it would. We've had those kinds of questions and surveys in the past.
Is there, is there any openness on the, the town's part to invest in some kind of a system that would enable online polling to take the temperature of the town on certain issues that could then feed into the various commissions? Because that in itself could be a.
Yeah.
Capital project.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Which could bring bigger dividends.
I, I suspect that people have thought about it. I don't know if it's been reduced to any kind of formal proposal, but I think Angianda would be someone to inquire whether or not she's done anything with that. I don't know if Peter has heard anything about it.
This discussion about this, but yeah.
It kind.
The, the six point five is the amount of the bond, correct, that we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay. And the, the Falls Road streetscape improvements, what is that exactly?
That's the set of improvements that, if I'm understanding it correctly, it's a set of improvements on the part of Falls Road, basically from Church Street to the intersection, that grew out of the village plan update. And then there was a more detailed study that resulted in engineering drawings of that particular area. So it has a lot of sidewalk, lighting, electrical type improvements in it. It goes back now four or five years. It's along Falls Road and that would have some implications for the other side, so the other side of the parade ground and for the village green. I can grab a roll of plans. It's a project that has had some challenges because of some concerns about the parking impact at the very northernmost part of that street, closest to Route seven.
How does something get categorized as highway versus public works? Like, I'm just curious about the, you know, the Bay Road Bridge is highway, but the Bay Road underpass and corridor improvements are public works.
That's a good question. I think when we had a public works director a few years ago, some of the larger projects were sort of put in that category, maybe not something directly requested by the highway superintendent. So it kind of evolved where the highway items were something the highway superintendent was involved with and then others, public works or other committees that recommended, then we broke it out. But it's, it's probably not a significant difference in terms of how we categor, how we, how we labeled it, so.
And to point that funding is what we just bought, correct?
That's right.
That nine seventy is what they use to just.
Yep.
Great.
The town's board's been done, right?
Yes.
Excellent. Peter, thank you for the overview and input and considering our comments.
Thank you for your questions.
Excellent. With that, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is a discussion of the comprehensive plan updates. First item that we're looking to tackle here is. First item that we're looking to tackle here is an introduction to the Historic and Cultural Resources section of the town plan. Andrew has graciously accepted or been appointed to lead this section. So, I will turn it over to Andrew. Everybody's received a copy of his proposed edits in their packet. And with that, the floor is yours, Andrew.
Okay. Yeah, and there's probably a couple very minor edits since these went to Dean just from a timing standpoint. So, I met with Fritz and Dorothea, Dorothea, and we went through this, got them all to you. And then they then gave me a second round of feedback. And it was, I think, just moving, you know, literally changing a bullet here or there. So, I mean, I can, you can probably call up that document. We can see those.
Yeah, I didn't notice that it had.
Yeah.
Since I had done the first pack and I thought, they must be really minor.
Yeah, no, they were pretty minor. But anyway, I just want to give that context. And then just the background context that, you know, I reached out to the folks on the relevant committees. Had a great meeting at the coffee shop with those two. Glad Fritz is here to do it and, you know, very educational for me in terms of context, background, deep dive. Clearly, a lot of brain power and passion there with that group. So, that was fun. It was, it was a really fun discussion. David Webster couldn't make the discussion, but hoping to circle back and connect with him. Oh, no, but nobody couldn't make that, that discussion, but he's here now. So, they had done a lot of work to, Dorothea obviously has a huge background in historic preservation and was pretty happy with the way things were phrased in the initial one. Did not want to see a radical overhaul, which is fine with me. So, you know, there's a couple just stylistic changes. Me being kind of a pedantic former English teacher, you know, archaeology's got to be spelled.
Which we love.
The right way, right? So, little things like that. Otherwise, you know, the biggest, I guess, adds and changes, you know, revolve some language, which could be, I guess, maybe there were some issues in the last go-around of trying to address this kind of language. So, in the objectives, you can see in purple at the end there, the town can work to secure first right of refusal on threatened assets. Threatened assets is a kind of term of art in the field, which is pretty well-understood by most people. But I guess that concerned past Select Boards. But just throwing that out there to you guys that there could be some pushback on that, that, that the terminology, but I feel like it's the right way to look at it. We had a pretty good discussion about trying to, not necessarily calling out in this document, specific places, but definitely working on trying to identify those. These guys have a pretty good idea of the top handful of places that really we should address. And that idea of as a town, you know, looking to talk with some of those landowners or just thinking about how, you know, I guess, looking ahead. So, you're not surprised by things suddenly changing, letting them know that the town would be interested in these and talking with them if they ever got to the point of changing ownership in any way. So, we didn't really call out specific properties, but we mentioned that here, that this idea of work, the securing first right of refusal. Yeah, other than that, we, you know, added something in there. Since this plan had been written before, the Shelburne Historical Society, which Dorothea heads, you know, has been created, thought about trying to kind of loop them in in terms of a resource to work with. Yeah, and I mean, that's basically the limited changes from the last draft.
Right. So, relatively modest suggested edits here. The good news is that, at least based on your input from the HPDRC, we're in a pretty good place with this, which is.
Yeah, I mean, I defer to these guys if there's anything else.
Right.
David didn't get to be part of the discussion. I think he's maybe seen the document, but.
Since we're fortunate to have both Fritz and David here, I, I'd be interested in your perspective on how are we doing on the recommended actions? I mean, it's easy enough for us to carry this over because that makes our work easy. And that's okay. But I, I want to make sure that are we, are we progressing against what recommended actions have been in there for a number of years? And some of these aren't necessarily tangible things that have a deliverable tie to them?
And that was some of my initial questions.
Yeah.
Was, okay, we asked for this X years ago. How many of them? Can I take anything off as anything?
Yeah. Could I ask you to grab the mic, Fritz? Sorry.
This morning.
I think it's on.
It is on? Good. We had a, the commission met in its regular meeting. We reviewed three applications and then were able to talk about this. I think the, the one issue that we have that, that we want to make sure that you all understand is that the, there are properties in Shelburne that are in danger. In the last year alone, we've had three demolitions. We've had to review three demolition applications. That's more than we've had in one year since I can remember. And some of these, you know, these demolitions often happen because of negligence. Negligent meaning, it's not criminal negligence, but in terms of historic preservation, some of it is. I mean, that's, that opinion notwithstanding, when people just neglect properties, let them go with the idea that eventually they'll fall down and they'll have to be demolished. And we have three of them that we know of that are close. And they're principal properties. They're important pieces.
Those are three more in addition to the three that?
No, that, well, the three that we talked about.
Okay, yeah.
So, that's the issue for us right now. That's the most important, one of the most important pieces. Now, David hasn't brought in another, do you want to talk about what you identified this morning?
Sure. And I actually, Dean clarified it for me because he said there would be another section that would be more.
Yeah, there, there is a section where.
The idea that David is going to touch on comes into play. So, maybe it's both sections, but.
I think there's going to be increased pressure to, well, pressure to increase density in the village. And I think a lot of it will be in the form of infill. And we're concerned about that really, the infill should not be the, become the primary structures on a lot, but that should, they should be secondary. And otherwise, I think we run the risk of really altering the character of the village significantly. So, I think we just want to make sure that nothing is, you know, my, I hadn't read this at that point. So, I mean, my concern was that we didn't, we didn't codify anything that then could be used as a means to sort of ignoring that. Because I think that's, in addition to what Fritz is just talking about, I, I mean, I think that pressure to really increase the density significantly is what the village area is going to be facing. And a lot of it, if there, if there are lots that say are deep and say in the falls or something in that area or where there is an opportunity for developing the back of a lot, we're not saying we're against that, but we don't want that to be the primary focus on a lot because it really does change the.
Streetscape level.
Absolutely. So, that's just what I was adding from this morning.
Yeah, and Dorothea made that pretty clear in our discussion, as I remember, when the coffee shop too, right? She was concerned about, we talked about some specific properties that, you know, as you add infill, if it's behind that building and the historic building is maintained and preserved, you know, you're adding some density behind buildings. That would be profitable to her than tearing down the initial building and.
Well, and I was taking that one step further, which was to say, given that there probably will be infill, the infill should not be the primary.
Right.
Focus of what's going on in that lot.
Yeah.
So, this is really interesting in having it right in front of the population growth segment that we were going to be discussing next. And I don't know if we just did that because it made sense or it just happened that way. But what you gentlemen are speaking about is the preservation of the areas of town that are generally older and have much more historical significance, where we've talked about wanting to have the density. Well, then, when we talk about the rural areas, the Conservation Committee wants the conservation of nature. And so, we have this back and forth of the town has grown tremendously from 1960 to today and the growth projections that the CCRP has put out by any other state's standards outside of Vermont would be very minimal. And so, this kind of segues into the numbers that are being provided to us by the county. Do we think that's too much? Do we think that's too little? Is it okay to say, we think the town, from a population perspective, has kind of hit the peak that we, as a planning commission and as a town, would like to see it not grow anymore? That doesn't mean you can't have economic development, but I feel like we're getting kind of boxed in or triangled in where nobody wants there to be much development anywhere because you're either losing the historical characteristics of the town or you're losing the nature side. And there's nothing wrong with that, you know? You don't have to become a South Burlington. You don't have to become a Burlington. So, it's like, how do we retain the character of a town that's from 1763 with farming roots, but also have some level of economic growth and population issues?
South Burlington is, it has a restriction on second structures. I believe restricts the height to 15 feet and there's a size limitation as well. And I found that out a year or so ago. I think that regs online. And I'm basically in agreement to what David is saying. And I, you know, I've argued about infill in the past. I think infill can change the character of neighborhoods that are really pretty successful right now. You don't drive through the falls and see real estate signs because people don't move. They like where they live. Usually, infill is a cure for urban areas that are in decline. And when it became a thing for growth advocate or abocation is, I don't know when that really happened. But, and it seems like sometimes we feel that we have a need to grow or we, as a commission, shouldn't be looking at that as our, our job, I don't think. I think we should be making sure that growth as it occurs is beneficial to the town.
Yeah, no, I mean, really, all really good points, I think. What we struggle with is, you know, the village is in Growth Area 1, right? It's a designated growth area. So, I don't know if what that speaks to, but the, it has to go somewhere, right? And we've made a policy decision as a town to.
And you say this is kind of your.
If it doesn't, I'm not sure that's what I'm hearing there. I'm hearing that maybe we can live with changes in density if the streetscape is honored and respected and preserved. And I don't know if that, to me, translates into a lot of what Kate shared with Form-Based Code in the Village, right? Like, are there things there that might resonate or might sort of address both?
I think, I think Form-Based Code in the Village would be a disaster.
Okay. I mean, these are good things to hear, right?
I don't think it's respective of what's already there. And I just, I don't think the Village is the appropriate place for that. And it becomes, I don't know that I would say in the Village it would really foster the kind of development that we'd, we'd really want to see. I don't think you can.
No, that's helpful to hear.
So, that's my opinion.
Right. I don't know if you speak for the entire HPDRC, but I suspect that that opinion might be shared by others on, on the HPDRC, which is helpful for us to hear because.
Probably come out against Form-Based Code for the Village.
Right.
You know, I can't, I can speak for a couple of people, but.
I hesitated to speak because also resulting from today, in, from today's meeting, we realized that we need to take a look at the, the fact, the enabling documents for show, for the Village being a National Historic District. Also, we need to really go through our own guidelines, which we administer. And I think those two documents are very, will be very instructive in this kind of discussion. We just, the town just spent a lot of money on this, this set of guidelines. There it is before you. Read the guidelines. You'll understand why we would say Form-Based Code is not even necessary. Just read the guidelines. It tells you what's acceptable and what isn't.
Do the guidelines speak to density?
No. It, it's, does it, but it does speak to the appropriateness of development. It's probably good that it does.
Right.
Because each lot is so different from the other lots. You have little groups of lots that are similar, but the historic assets are what are important in the Village in the, because the entire district, the entire Village overlay district is an historic district on the National Register. So, you have to address each one. How, how could you do a Form-Based Code on that?
Yeah, I would say that my, one of my big takeaways from the discussion at the coffee shop was kind of netting out, Perry said it better than I could have. But, you know, we spent so much time talking about the rural district and how we don't want to lose views and lose farmland and, and do things, but that the.
And maintain the character.
Right. And that, you know, as we talked about it, when we moved here six years ago, you know, we looked at Burlington, we looked at Shelburne, we looked at South Burlington. And it was a really clear reason why we moved to Shelburne. You know, that there was a sort of a heart and soul to the downtown. There was a real community aspect to it. You know, you had this kind of rural beauty and, you know, you want, one of the reasons why I want to be on this commission was so that the Everett family of 25 years from now is still making that decision, you know, sort of what we talked about, that, you know, it's, it's still super desirable. And one of the things we talked about was that, you know, some of these historic assets are some of the things that make the town desirable and beautiful and worth being here. You know, as you walk down the streets, you know, you can kind of see whether it's just literally cleared out from the, the date on the front thing, whose house it was when it was built. You know, it gives you a sense of being part of something greater than you are. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's struck me as a huge conflict that, you know, we want to maintain all this, yet Growth Area 1 is, you know, that's where we want it to go. That tension really struck me as I've been thinking about for the last week or so. Of course, everybody, nobody wants growth where they are, right? The rural people don't. The Village doesn't, you know? So, there's a little bit of NIMBYism, I guess, in saying, all right, last one, like, I got here. I moved in. I've been here six years. Now, nothing can change for me, right? So, that's the tension.
Just add, in, in the objectives numbers five and six, I think you have to remember also that in terms of, if you think of Shelburne Farms and the Shelburne Museum and, you know, I think the, the nature of the Village is an economic driver. And I don't think that should be forgotten. So, people respond, I mean, people respond to the Village as it is. And that, that makes it a, a resource that really has an economic benefit. So, aside from the aesthetics and aside from, for the people living here, if you talk about supporting cultural resources such as Shelburne Farms and Shelburne Museum, they benefit from proximity to the Village, so.
That's a really good point.
Yeah, and we talked a little bit too about, you know, I don't live, I live two miles from the Village, but my home values are maintained and improved by the character of the Village, right? So, it's, it's an economic engine for the whole town if it can stay somewhat as much like it is now as possible. You know, as you obliterate it, you obliterate some of the tremendous value of the, of the town.
I mean, to David's comment there, I wonder if we should almost.
Yeah, I just took a note to call it out specifically there.
Specific about that, right? Like, I think that's a good point, that they really are economic drivers for the town.
Yeah, and we talk about it.
Probably worthy of including in here somewhere in language.
The next one below that, number six, in terms of sustain the town's historic and cultural resources as a means of advancing economic development objectives and enhancing value in existing properties.
Yeah, I like that.
That was where we were trying to get at, that idea of, you know, that the historic Village is a driver of our, you know, value and it maintains values in, in homes throughout the town.
Did it go with enhancing and, I lost my train of thought.
So, going back. So going back to David's comment about infill density pressure, and is that something that the commission feels we should address specifically within this section? The comment's been made. I think it's a, it's a good comment, that clearly there is pressure there, and if, from a policy perspective, we do want to address that, then now's the time for us to think about whether we include language somewhere in this section that addresses infill.
If I can just jump in, Jamie. Having been at the meeting this morning and having worked with both the Planning Commission and the HPDRC a long time, I think one of the first things that needs to happen is what is meant by infill? Because even this morning, I was hearing people referring to infill in the context of the accessory building someone might put on a lot and the scale of that. And that is, that is, in a sense, infill, but it is also, in a sense, something that happens as the village, as a village establishes itself. You have the houses, and then you have the outbuildings. Our zoning regulations have been pretty much the same way regarding that kind of development for a long time. So I think that if there are, if we're concerned about infill, we need to be really specific about what exactly we mean. Some other people may be more concerned about the idea of the further subdivision of some of these lots, but that's a different, that's a different thing, and our zoning regulations allow it. I was hearing some people say that if the scale is right and it's back far enough, I think even some of Fritz's comments tonight alluded to this, if it's not competing with the building on the streetscape, that's less of a concern. Well, then, is that, that's, is that an acceptable form of infill? So I think we have to just really be careful about, everyone understanding what is meant by infill.
I think the problem, part of the problem is when we changed the zoning and increased the ability to put more housing in there, we didn't take enough, pay enough attention to how that property would be developed, just as we were talking about the PUDs and rural district. There's a lot I complain about that was subdivided, I guess legally, you know, I mean, it went through PRD, but if you know the Falls area, there's a steep bank that goes down to the river, and there's a low-level flatland. The bank is 20%, 25%. And a lot just went through subdivision there last fall, I guess. And they put that house way down on the next level down, instead of bringing it behind the house that was already there, reducing stormwater runoff by not having a road that goes down over a 20-foot bank, or it's more than a 20-foot bank, it's 40, 50 feet. If you were to walk that property today and see it, you'd be, you'd wonder why, how can we allow that to happen? I don't have a problem with the density, but that structure should have been up on the, near the road. And it's...
Is that infill development to you?
I think the term infill development, no.
No.
Not necessarily, no. But it's still, it's very comparable. It's the same zoning as what creates infill development. So the density...
Jamie, how would you define the little development that's kind of across the street from the post office?
I think that's probably what...
That's, that's, basically, I think that meant exactly the, what we were looking for.
Wasn't that subdivided, that?
That is, the posy subdivision is a subdivision. It's a subdivision.
And it met the new zoning criteria that we created. I don't have a problem with that development. Is that, do you think that's a bad one, or?
I think it's...
It's not super attractive, and it doesn't really fit with the character of the surrounding neighborhood, but I'm just curious if that would be defined infill.
I would agree with that, but I...
The positives of that neighborhood, though, as we are thinking about having different generations of people that want to have, and as we saw through that 20-page housing subcommittee document, yes, there's a substantial percentage of residents in Shelburne that make significantly more money than the median income of Vermonters and people in the US. What that new posy subdevelopment did is provide, one, single-story homes, which elderly people generally like because there's no stairs. Two, they're energy efficient, which is good from all of the issues that we have with energy. Three, they're relatively affordable by Shelburne standards. And four, they're smaller, which is for smaller starter families because people are having less kids, et cetera, et cetera. So, well, it doesn't fit, you go through and it looks different, right? Because it's all brand-new, and you're like, hey, this is nice, but this doesn't really go with what's around it, and it's hard to get that blend in, but it hits and checks all the other boxes. And the more restrictions that we put in terms of kind of development, it kind of makes it harder to put in affordable housing. Because if you restrict places that can grow, it drives up the value of the lot, and so you kind of self-select the people that are able to afford to live in the town. And so again, it's this...
Yeah, it's hard, isn't it?
Isn't the big concern, though, the, it's the look and feel.
It's the feeling of place, the sense of place. And Fritz, you mentioned it, that there are three houses that are, there have either been three demolitions or three that are close to demolition due to neglect. So is that something that we have any control over, which...
There are regulations regarding demolition, but they don't mean that it never happens. And that, you know, people...
Are there regulations about upkeep if they're on a national historic neighborhood?
There isn't a demolition, demolition by neglect component in our regulations, although at least one member of the HPDRC has mentioned that as something she would like to see. We haven't gone on that far enough. I can think of at least one house where you just, it, and you can, if it had been, if it would kept up, it would look fabulous in that spot, and now it's like the one you sort of don't look at as you go by, you know? And is there any way to say, like, you know, like, everybody's got to cut their grass, and everybody's got to get, you know, like, it becomes a bit of a...
We struggled with this when we talked about storage trailers. It's not a very different issue, in my opinion.
I think, I think our term is incentivize.
If there's a way to incentivize an owner without favoring that owner over others, but to give, you know, incentivize in ways that the town can, in ways that government can, then that's what we would support, you know? Incentivize preservation. And how do you do that? Well, there are a number of ways to do it, I'm sure. Taxes, credits, setback, you know, some, some room in the zoning ordinance that might favor a greater density. And so there you go. So you can, you can work with that and maybe set up a few mockups or test cases. And we talked about that probably a year or so ago. We wanted to, we had a couple of them, and we said, well, why don't we just run through a test case? Our issue is that we are, we're part of the regulatory body, you know, we're, and it's hard for us to think like a developer. Even, you know, two of us are architects, but it's still hard. You kind of, you, it's hard to change hats and be, you know, aggressive and try to work a profitable outcome for a developer and still keep your other hat on and say, you can do this and you can't do that. I could do it for a client. I just need a client to say, these are the meets and bounds, this is the budget, this is where we're going, this is what I want. Can we do it? And I think that would be a good exercise. I think we ought to take, you know, a couple of properties and find a way to mock up or game a potential development to see the possible outcomes. Be interesting.
That certainly would be. And along the lines, since we were talking about the properties over by the post office, I think the objection that there may be is that look of newness and, like, you have vinyl siding, and it doesn't necessarily fit in a historic village context. But then, isn't that something that we could manage by defining materials or a particular look that needs to be used for any projects that go in in that area, and that that's what we don't define today?
We do it a sense with our guidelines.
Okay.
We didn't when we were talking.
Okay.
So we ought to take those guidelines.
Right.
So if another lot down the road was going to be subdivided in the same way, your guidelines could apply more stringently now? Is that what you're saying? As opposed to that particular development?
The guidelines are newer than that, than that application, right? We're talking about the Fisher property, right?
I believe everyone is talking about Fisher Place, yeah.
And I think he was, we didn't try to enforce new guidelines during his application period.
It started, it started well before Brandy had finished that project, yeah.
Right, okay.
So what we're saying, though, is that the new guidelines that we do have in place would, they would, and I need to review them, I haven't seen them, but...
When you do, I think you'll see that there are a lot of answers there that weren't there before.
Okay.
Yeah, I can share, they're really thorough.
Excellent.
So do the guidelines affect the new building that is being, replacing that structure?
No, because it seems to be sort of a comparable style. I mean, it isn't finished yet.
The commission really wanted to see that building preserved. And the developer thought and proved to us that it could not be preserved economically. It could be preserved if someone, and many people do, have the, has the heart and the money and the commitment to basically rebuild it. It's kind of like rebuilding an old car. You know, you, there's a market for it, and maybe there isn't a market for it. You're not really interested in that. You want to rebuild the car. So that's, that was the issue. When we talked about demolition of that, replacement of that building, we wanted a building that essentially did not change in great regard or in great way, the massing of the sense of what was there. So we wanted to see a two-story building, and we wanted to see it address the street as other buildings don't. They address the streets in the development. We want to see, we wanted to see a building that, as the old building did, has its front door or expresses at least a front facade on that road. So those were the kind of the guidelines that we worked with. And then we reviewed his suggestions, and he did a lot of work, and I think we came to a point where we all compromised. The one thing we do, we realize, we recommend, we don't dictate aesthetics. So at some point, the owner takes responsibility for that. And we try to lead as much as we can. Sometimes we're led by, positively, by owners who say, well, you know, this, that, and so forth. Oh, we didn't know. So it's a give and take, and it has to do with development of a project and understanding that we don't say it does, is, or we do not say ever that it should or should not happen. We have no say in that. The strongest thing we do is recommend, and that's really good for the town. And that allows the town to change and develop.
Thanks, Fritz. I like this idea of the carrot being more effective than the stick in this space, and I think we did a pretty good job trying to synthesize that in the Form-Based Code work we did when we identified the historic resources and started to develop these incentives for restoration of historic properties. And I, I wonder, you know, as I'm listening to you, I wonder if we can try to find some common ground on a new recommended action along the lines of considering regulatory and non-regulatory techniques to incentivize historic preservation, right? Like, let's say what we mean, mean what we say, and if that's what we think will be effective for us to address this, then I'd suggest let's put it in there and make it an area of study. It may not necessarily be the planning commission's area of study, and this will, of course, move up to the select board, and they may not agree with that and edit it, remove it, but I think it's important to think creatively in this area, and that's something where we probably haven't spent enough time as a community, thinking about how we incentivize the outcomes we're looking to see. So I put that out there for reactions and consideration and rejection.
The recommended actions four and five, I think I could probably rework those a little bit and either layer that in there or break out a separate recommended action that calls out what you said.
Yeah.
If you want to email me.
Yeah, I'm happy to email you just my draft language that you can work with or work it back in, and maybe it's a separate recommended action, maybe it's not, and we can, you know, test it with the HPDRC too. I mean, you'll see a draft of this once we get through it, so, but I think it's important to make sure that we stay focused on that as we get into this next iteration of the town plan.
Does the HPDRC have a fund that can purchase properties deemed very important?
No, no. But I wanted to just sort of reiterate what Fritz had said. I think the problem is if you get someone who's buying a piece of property with the idea that they're going to redevelop a portion of it, and it's not economically feasible, I mean, from their standpoint, this is, this is the problem we are going to be dealing with. And so there has to be some, something to sweeten the deal. And, and I think it also puts us in a position that we can be a little more adamant about it, that there is an option there. And so to say, I can't do this because it's going to come out of my pocket, well, if there's, you know, there's a financial incentive, then, then I think we're all in a better position to say, well, you know, you kind of knew that this is what you were going to be dealing with when you took this on, and there is another, there is another avenue, and if you're not going to take that avenue, we're not going to support this project. So, because ultimately, we're not looking to shut down development, but we are looking to shut down the kind of development that wants to just level what might be at the front of a developable lot or subdivisible lots.
Great. Thank you for coming this evening and for the input and for taking the time to weigh in on this. Much appreciated.
The one, one other takeaway I got from these guys was that there are clear, you know, that these guys have a pretty good list, a pretty good sense of the endangered assets. And I don't know what our, you know, abilities are here, or to sort of, do we want to call some of these out specifically? You know, what would be the avenue to sort of make this public from the town to, you know, landowners potentially, that we would love to discuss these particular properties? We've identified these as historically important and, you know, worth looking at because they have value either for, and there's some that are adjacent to us here, where, you know, like the, we talked a little bit about Marquette Appliance Building there, you know, that could have real value to the town in terms of being adjacent to the library and the coffee shop and town buildings.
The next herb was a knockdown at one point.
Yeah, so you're talking about objective number two, right? The inventory of historic resources.
Yeah, but I mean, it's like, taking that, that's sort of vague in general, right? Versus specifically...
Create and maintain.
It's in our charter as a planning commission to say, you know, these are three to five properties that we think have historic value in the town, and, you know, if they were to go up for sale, we'd love to talk to you. We want right of first refusal as a town, or we want, we just want you to know that the town would be interested in discussion with you before you subdivided or sell to develop or demolish. The statutory authority that the town has includes the designation of historic landmarks, and that was something that was actually embedded in the Form-Based zoning. So there are, there's a list of, I think, nine or 10 properties in the Form-Based zoning, and it capitalizes on that section of the regulations. So, I mean, that's just as a starting point. You could identify properties in the plan and say that it's the beginning of a, or may lead to designation of historic landmarks. Question then will be, well, what are you going to do? And if you call something a landmark...
And if you call something a landmark, then what are you gonna, what will that really mean? Is it going to be just a focus so that you attract private resources? Because the, you know, we were talking about infill and concerns about too much density. And yet, when we're talking about some of these properties, you know, Bill Posey was in and he was looking for zoning changes. He wanted more density and I'm sure that part of his logic was that that might help increase the odds of doing something more with the Fisher house. He didn't get that, that there were no changes in the, in the density that were allowed. So the Fisher building had to stand on its own. But if we.
Yeah, no, it's a good point though, Dean. I, I like the way you're thinking about it and I think the form-based code is a good example of, we actually did that.
I'm only thinking about it because these guys steered me in that direction.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea and I would sort of put it back to the HPDRC to be, to say, would that have value, right? I mean, if it's incorporated into the comprehensive plan, will that provide some incremental value as far as what we're trying to do with respect to those properties? Maybe, I don't, I don't know. Nothing jumps out at my mind as what, okay, that's great, we have a list of 15 locations here, what does that mean?
Well, it's a step in the direction. It's kind of like the conversation that you had at the last meeting about, or Kate was facilitating about this overlay map for the rural district. It wouldn't necessarily be that you amend the town plan this time to totally change the rural district. But if you can agree on this map, then maybe the next time you'll have enough consensus so that you will know how to change it. If you add to the plan this list of historic assets in the village, then maybe by the next time you will know more specifically what it is you would actually do with it in terms of a zoning change.
Yeah, I mean, I support wholeheartedly incorporating that list into the town plan. I don't necessarily know what we would do above and beyond memorializing that in the document. But I think we could develop some language that spoke to a recommended action that's generic enough to at least park a to-do for either this commission or a future commission down the road to consider as a priority.
We have a conservation fund for land, open lands. Why don't we have a fund to conserve buildings?
That's why I, that's why I brought that up and I asked, because the.
So that's an option. I mean, and then that fund can be used to seed and to assist in, in, in the preservation of historic assets. Enhance them in fact, so. Remember too, that because we're in a district, an historic district, the tax credits for improving a property for commercial purposes are, are something to talk about. And that part I didn't understand in the Fisher development. There was a building across from the post office, it would have been a, could have served a number of small commercial purposes. An attorney, you know, some commercial work. And every dollar that goes into the preservation of, of the spaces that are dedicated to that commercial purpose is a dollar that gets a tax credit. It, it makes a lot of sense for a number of developers. Why it didn't in this case, I don't know. Maybe it was because the building couldn't stand on its own, given the fact that it wasn't given a zoning, a density allowance, so. But had the fund been there, throw that in, work out some things and look at, you know, other options. A lot of this is on the developer, that's to be sure. But I think the town also has some interest in, in doing this because it is a national historic district.
Do any other towns in Vermont have historic preservation funds?
I don't know.
At a municipal level?
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of municipal funds. I mean, there are organizations like.
Like a Preservation Vermont.
And Burlington, yeah, Preservation Burlington.
Preservation Burlington.
The conserved land isn't taxable, right? We're talking about taxable property here, enhancing an economic development basically, so seems pretty simple to me.
Depending on, yeah, depending on the type of conservation, Fritz, it, it, the value doesn't necessarily go to zero. It may be that it's agricultural value, but.
Great, thank you again. We're going to move on to our next agenda item here. But just for, to confirm next steps on this section, Andrew, we'll, I think we'll probably pick it back up, right? We'll make some fine tuning adjustments.
I assume we're circling back.
We will, yeah, we're going to circle back to everything, so it doesn't necessarily need to be at the next meeting, but we do have some food for thought on this, so we can, you know, evolve it.
Some good notes here to add and then if you send me that wording, I think we're.
We'll pick it back up, but definitely.
The only question I had was, you know, Fritz's idea of mocking up outcomes of key properties, like that's a pretty cool idea. I mean, if you just took example of Marcot, you know, like, all right, you know, given the rigs that we have, what could happen on that piece of property? You know, and you had some design mockups or some, you know, and people could get a sense of like, oh, wow, you know, we wouldn't want that in the center of our town.
Yeah, it would have been nice if we had this conversation before we talked about our grant ideas. Because that, I agree, that's a kind of interesting idea that requires a little bit of dollars to move forward probably. And it seems like it would sync up well with some of the things I've seen from the state on just the historic downtowns and.
Yeah, although to look on the bright side, there was a study done in 2000, looking at the village, looking at a lot of transportation issues. But to some degree, the plan that was part of that study does a little bit of that. And we are supposed to update that transportation study some, starting this fall. So maybe what I can do is try to see what opportunities there are to do some of these scenarios as part of that village transportation study.
Strap that in, that would be interesting to see if we can do that.
Yeah, that would be cool.
Okay, good, some really good ideas and dialogue, thank you again. Our next topic is an introduction to the population and growth section. And Perry graciously put his hand up on this one and, and Dick have both agreed to sort of walk us through a brief intro to the section itself, how you're thinking about it, things we should be thinking about as we start to tackle updates and edits. This for, as Dick can share and Dean can, this is a, a section that generates a lot of conversation at public hearing, at least historically, am I right, Dean?
Yeah.
This one certainly last go around when I was on the commission, this was a very hot topic, let's say. So I suspect it will continue to be one of the better attended sections of the public hearings once we get there. So it's a, it's a really important one that we should commit.
Along those lines, I did just want to mention that Jerry Story on the select board was hoping to be here and I'm sure it was because of this discussion. But he had something come up that he couldn't attend, but he's going to watch the tape.
Good, I know, thank you Jerry, I know the economic development piece as well ties into this. So with that, I will cede the floor to my co-commissioners here.
I mean, what I had brought up as we were talking about the end of the last segment is before we delve into economic growth and development is these are the numbers that have been provided by the county saying, this is how we are forecasting the state to grow. This is how we're forecasting the county to grow, this is how we're forecasting the town of Shelburne to grow. And so before we kind of agree on, do we think growth should be more or less or equal to those numbers? Can we as a commission and as a town say, we are okay with the numbers that they've provided in terms of just saying like, this is, this is what we're going to be discussing off of, so everybody is kind of looking and viewing the same thing.
Same frame.
Yes, can, can we agree on that so that we can then disagree over too hot, too cold?
Can we agree on the inputs and we can disagree on the policy direction?
They'll be the first people to tell you that they haven't been very accurate in the past.
But this is the best, this is the best case scenario. What's their historic accuracy like if we went back?
So here's my take on it. It's a really hard assessment to make because the approaches they have used have gone all over the board. They've used some nationally driven econometric type models, which really were high. They've done some other projections that were, might be really low. So it's hard to say that the, I mean, they have swung wildly. They've overestimated growth and they've underestimated growth.
Right.
That's.
Well, my, my questions were kind of like, you know, what's the source of the data? In other words, is it super local creating this? Is it national process that sort of filters down to us? So it's not really been massaged to be, to know what's going on on the ground here? And then kind of the goal and intent of these, the data they send, like, is it just for planning purposes? And then, yeah, I was curious about their accuracy in the past.
I wish that I had spent more time and maybe, I mean, I sent you some things Perry, I don't know if I'd sent you all the background memos that the consultant who is working for the regional planning commission had done regarding methodology. But I can tell you that the, the initial set of numbers came as a result of a projection done for the entire state. The consultants who did that forecast are the same consultants who are working for the regional planning commission. They took the state figure, brought it down to the regional level. And the thing about Chittenden County is that it's the, it's where the action is happening in terms of Vermont. So it's, it's getting a good share of that modest statewide, statewide growth. And then they went through this exercise of dividing the county number down to the town level. In terms of methodology, I'm going to butcher it, but I can send out material that describes it. But it was, and this says revise March 8th, 2017. This was done over a period of several months before they finalized the numbers at the board level.
And do they reflect reality in terms of the 2010 number and 2015 number? Like that was what we were in 2010 and that is what we were.
Right, they, right.
What's the source for this, is this RPC?
It is the consultant, it, P EPR and, yeah, that's Jeff Carr's shop, right? Yeah.
Is RPC blessed?
Yes, it, the set of numbers, because they are using them in their modeling, were adopted by their board.
And what causes the dip in 2040?
Yeah.
Yeah, throughout the data.
That's gonna, that's gonna, I think only become clear when we see what their statewide numbers were and what was the basis for that.
Baby mercers leave.
That's, yeah, I was wondering.
Leave. Okay.
Yeah, it is, yeah, right.
In the prior plan, it says, you know, 110 people per year. Do people think that's too much, too little? Like, again, it comes down to think, if you break it down to such small components, it, it becomes really difficult. It's more like, this is how many people are in the town now. How much bigger do you think that the town could feasibly be where it retains all of the characteristics that all of the interested parties want it to be?
Yeah, I mean, we spent a lot of time on that annual rate of growth trying to.
But just think like, like, look at the, look at, look at the 2050 number versus where we are today. We're at around 7,700, 7,500. By 2050, it's projecting 9,000. Do we think we can take on 1,300 more people with housing and, and the water and sewer and all of these things?
That's exactly the way to think of it.
But if we don't build any new housing and it's only refurbishing existing housing.
Then we need to adjust downward for that rate.
Correct.
Yeah.
And not to mention the fact that people are having fewer children per household. So whereas there used to be maybe four or five people, six people in a household, now it may only be three or four because kids are more expensive now than they used to be.
I'd have to see how that number has affected growth.
And the discussion that went on the last time around was monumental, I think the argument about this section, as you were saying. But I honestly don't know if it's 107 or 110 or 150, how it affects growth.
But I think it was 107 averaged over the time period.
Over the time period.
But there is clearly a front loading of that more toward the 60s when you looked at the greater data set, the 60s, 70s.
We did have a long list of projections, I don't know what happened.
Why would our percentage of the county change dramatically to, I mean, not super dramatic, but 4.5 to 5%? I mean.
It's just being out, well, if you look at growth in a, you know, positive light, you're out hustled by other communities where they're going to get a bigger share.
This is like saying we're out hustling down, if our share is growing, like.
We're becoming more attractive.
Or saturation, I mean, relative to the Burlington's and Winuski's.
Yeah, yeah, there's capacity relative to.
On the detail page, some of them reduce in certain periods, like in terms of.
There was one other thing that I need to get out on the table and probably do it in a more structured way in a, something in the package. The zoning enabling statute in Vermont does give a burden to municipalities to accommodate multifamily housing. I say that that way just because if people are thinking, well, maybe we'll just, we won't grow, the zoning regulations that you might put into place to, to ensure that you don't grow would probably be challenged and they would probably get knocked down. So I think you have to start from the premise, there will be some level of growth naturally or as a result of legal actions that, you know, courts have ruled that municipalities do have some responsibility to accommodate a share of regional growth. Not necessarily in Vermont that way, but the concept applies.
That's a good point, that's what we're directing, trying to direct our growth is on the corridor. And hopefully, we're going to get some apartments and.
So to just go back to Perry's initial question about can we align on, on this source? To me, it's as good as any. I don't know what the other options are, honestly, since this is what's been put in front of us. I think this is what we used on the last go around, but I'm not.
I know, these numbers for the last go around, this.
What did we use, yeah.
The numbers that were used in the 2014 era were some other regional numbers that balanced. There's a, there was a state A and a state B forecast and, yeah, I can pull out the slides.
No, it's okay, it's just. Do you think this is going to be more accurate data than what we used five years ago or?
I tend to believe that the more recent figures are going to be better, at least for the next 10 years than something old. That's just my bias.
No, but I mean, in terms of the quality of the sourcing and likely accuracy.
You know, there's, small area projections are such a crapshoot.
Yeah.
We did more in one year than we did in four or five years prior to that when we did the village project. So there was a huge bump.
I would imagine other towns use RPC, at least within Chittenden County, data for this type of analysis, right? It's prob, we're not breaking new ground and we can feel comfortable knowing that it's probably relied upon by other communities as a.
I would be surprised if there are very many, if any, communities that have come up with their own set of numbers that are different.
Exactly, okay.
I mean, when you piece it out, you know, five-year chunks growing by 100 to 200 people, you know, it doesn't seem that radical in terms of impact to the town.
But look at how many houses are for sale right now and how many are getting built year over year. Like, there's 30 structures for sale in Shelburne right now, starting at 5 million and going down to 200K for undeveloped piece of land.
Way down, the market is way down.
Normally Shelburne would have 45 to 60 houses on.
So it's tight.
To the inventory.
Very tight market.
Okay.
The higher end is, there are more available properties, which is why they might stand out.
But your point would be that therefore we need to develop new.
Areas.
Pieces for, in order to be able to have people have the ability to move in.
Correct.
There's seven houses in Burlington right now under 250.
Which is viewed as a starter home, correct-ish?
Yeah, people looking for a 250 house, like, you know, you really have to check eight times a day to see if one comes on the market.
Well, I, to answer your first question, I think we can feel confident on the source because I don't think we're going to get past that this evening.
Agree with what the numbers say.
The rate conversation will be something we spend a significant amount of time on. I think it'll be helpful for us to frame up those big picture thoughts, right? Like, let's think about sort of the, the housing piece of it. And have that in front of us so that we can, as we start to get into the narrative here and really into the numbers, since that's probably what will be focused on more than real structural changes in here, I suspect.
The whole reason for that number is if, if we start crowding it by a significant amount, then we, the DRB can tell developers that they can only build so many houses a year in a project.
Yeah, no, it's a failing, right? It's definitely a constraint. It's definitely a constraint.
The whole crux of the numbers. And if it's a one-time deal, then we usually tend to ignore it, I think. I don't, I don't know that we've, we haven't.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, it's an average number too, so.
Well, Jamie, they talk a lot about, or the plan talks a lot about the facilities and the sewer capacity and the water capacity and all of these things. Like, we should know what is our capacity? Like, how many more gallons more can go through the water, can go through the sewer and then back it into, well, this is how many more residents we can hit, get in here before we need to build more capacity.
I agree. No, I, I think that would be helpful.
That's why it's all in this one section and you get to look at all of it.
I think.
But no, on a more serious note, there is a meeting tomorrow, the, the study that Peter referred to about consolidating, there's actually a progress report tomorrow, 8 o'clock. And so there's information that's being developed on that question and we'll make sure that you get it, but those things do work, they work together. And the other thing that may be seen as working together is, and I don't want to throw you off track from talking about population, but you can also look at the employment. And while we're still talking about really tiny percentage on an annual basis, the economic numbers, the employment numbers are consistently slightly higher than the household or the population numbers that are prepared for the Regional Planning Commission. And maybe that tells you something, maybe it doesn't. And maybe that's just a second or a follow-up question to the one that Perry just asked about, is, does it seem basically right? And does it also seem basically right that in Shelburne at least, the rate of employment growth is going to slightly outpace the rate of population growth?
When you say the rate of employment growth, you mean the percentage of people that are employed in the town of Shelburne?
I'm talking, it's, this is a jobs number on, so this, on the follow-up page, it's in the highlight.
These percentage of these, I mean, it's outcasing.
Yeah, so the average annual growth rate in population is compared to the average annual growth rate. And, and these are jobs, so it's not necessarily people Shelburne, working in Shelburne, it's the jobs in Shelburne. So some of these jobs will be filled by people outside, but it is, you know, this rough jobs-housing balance concept.
And just tying it back to what you were saying before, I mean, the, that number's going to outpace the housing growth because a lot of people who are going to get jobs here can't afford to live here.
Some of it, I.
Yeah, and that would be a reason why employment would outpace population.
And, and we're Shelburne, we're not South Burlington, we're not Essex, so, and our share is lower as compared to the population because we're more of a bedroom community.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, those are good, big picture trends to think about as we dive into this.
One other number that jumped out at me was the, the revised person, persons in households number was smaller than the total population, which it does specify non-student population, so it's entirely possible that the gap is number of students who live in Shelburne. But for 2010, that number would be 78. I didn't know if that, the, on, on the page with the little numbers, the second highlight is revised persons in households. And if you look at Shelburne for 2010, basically, all of the numbers are smaller than the population of Shelburne on the other side of the page.
Right, 7,066 versus 7,144.
Right. So in that case, there's a gap of 78 and it does say non-student population. So these would be the type of things, just to understand what the numbers represent if we're, if, well.
Right, there are some, there are some. Non-household figures like, that would be, you know, arbers or places like that where they're not household counts.
So, yeah, okay, so then in that case, it would be understanding this.
So, yeah, if a popul, you know, a nursing home wouldn't be considered households.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't remember what, what institutions exactly make up that, but that's what it's getting at. It's the non-institutional population, for lack of a better term.
Got it. And then the front page number would include institutional population as well.
That's everything.
Okay.
Thanks.
They're going down.
As we get into the more granular walkthrough on this, how are you both thinking about, what should we include in the packet to make the, the detail work as productive as possible? And to zero in on, on the big questions, right, that we should be thinking about, whether it's that, the rate, right? I think that's one that pops out to me as, as something we need to, to validate.
Just for a little bit of context, in, in plans way, way back, there wasn't a number, it was, the desired level was expressed as a percentage, just to give you that background?
That's helpful. That's an option.
I didn't make, I didn't come up with a significant amount of changes.
Okay.
I felt like maybe the first paragraph we should update under population growth, maybe bring in the last, I don't know exactly what the cutoff on that was on this paragraph.
Just update the numbers?
Well, bring it up to date.
Yeah. So instead of 7,144 in 2010.
Right, and then.
It's getting the last two or three years in, there's been quite a few more permits issued then.
Yeah, yeah, no, we would update those numbers if, if the decision is to stick with this format, right? Which it sounds like we're doing generally, right? I think we'll continue to, to follow this and just adjust the objectives and recommended actions. Economic development, this is one where I think we could be a little bit more intentional about. Dick, what you just brought up before is, you know, how do we drive that, that Route 7 corridor as a focus area for economic development opportunities, just being more in front of that? In the language, it doesn't jump out at me. At least, I don't even see it specifically in here, so that's something that I'd, I'd like to see us add. But, but we'll get into the specific walkthrough at our next section. I think this is a good preview of, of what's to come and, and the data, at least we can all agree that let's, for the time being, let's rely on the, the RPC as our source to inform this and then.
I wondered if I did do a couple edits or I thought might be edits on that second page, number two. I don't even know why that top number two is there. It doesn't really say that we're doing or not doing anything. Just doesn't seem like it needs to be there.
About diversity?
It just says to ensure that the town continues to house a diversity of residents. Well, I think we're going to do that regardless of what we write here, it doesn't matter. Whether that's here or not, that's going to continue.
Well, but as, I mean, as an objective.
How do we, how do we, how do we control that? We don't control that. I mean, we don't discriminate, that's, that's the law. That's really all we need to know.
Well, I mean, I think we control it, we just talked about how we control it, you know, the cottage housing is a good example of, right? There's a, there's a price point element to that and by us sort of incentivizing that or at least creating a zoning structure that allows that, I think.
But even still, the cheapest lot was what, 350, 379, which is not, it's, that's not affordable for 90% of the population.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm not suggesting we're doing enough on that front, I'm just saying, I thi, I think.
I think that's where the apartments come in though.
Yeah, I mean, I would be uncomfortable taking this out because I don't really feel very confident that.
I'll leave it for the attorney.
This would necessarily continue as a policy decision on the town. I just don't feel like, I, I like keeping that in there.
That's aspirational.
It is, yeah.
Okay.
I would be concerned about taking it out, not from a legal perspective, more.
I know what you're going to say, go ahead.
You know what I'm going to say? Federal fair housing and the grants that we get and the town in, in receiving these grants signs a policy that says we're going to, I think the phrase is actively further fair housing policy and so taking out of lang, taking out language like that would be.
I agree.
Shooting ourselves in the foot as far as demonstrating.
Yeah. So we're going to lose Mary Ann here, I think, in a minute, so she'll turn into a pumpkin, which she warned me about. So let's, let's table this one for the time being. I think we did at least accomplish one thing, which is agreeing on the, the source of the data for us going forward. And then we'll pick it up with Perry and Dick's leadership at a future meeting. Next item on our agenda is just a quick, I had asked for the future land use map, just for everybody's awareness. I think this came up in the context of the, the rural area discussion and I thought it would be helpful for everybody just to see it. Unfortunately, Dean included South Burlington's future land use map, which in my opinion is much better than ours and speaks to sort of, it's the more heat map style version, which they have spent a good amount of time on. And I know as a community, they, having lived there, they, they spent a lot of time developing this and there was a lot of public input on it. I would certainly like to see us improve our, the visual presentation of this going forward. I don't think we need to do anything tonight necessarily, it was more just including it for everybody's awareness when we picked the rural district back up. We haven't spent really any time talking about the maps and how that will all change, but just park it in your memory for, for future reference and we'll, we'll revisit that, but I think it would be helpful for everybody to just think about, you know, what direction might that map go in? South Burlington is certainly a good model and has been a good model for other work we've done, including Stormwater and the Route 7 form-based code, so.
I was intrigued to see that basically right underneath the A and the F of draft, they have pegged this very low density, primarily open space. And then UVM just sold all that land to build a massive development there, you know, so it's just kind of a chuckle.
Yep. Yeah, right here, right along Swift Street there.
Swift Street and Spear Street on both sides of that intersection, one north on Spear and one on Swift.
Did the farm get sold?
It's woods now, I think.
It's, is it about 80 acres that they offered?
Well, there's like two different parcels, yeah, and, and they were going to try and buy up some other ones to make it more contiguous and connect.
Van Turkovich, I think, is the buyer.
But that has been, yeah.
Cut somewhat controversial.
Yeah.
So adopted. Well, I just, you know, again, for us, par purposes, like, all right, we look at this piece of property that's, you know, currently woods and, you know, great, we want to keep it that way and then bam, one stroke of a pen, it's changed status completely. It's just something for us to think about.
Yeah, well, it, it does speak to what Gail's talked a lot about, about these different levels of.
Yeah.
What does conservation mean?
Right. Oh, it's owned by the university, that won't change until they sell it.
Yep, and that's, I think, a good topic for us to pick up at our retreat.
Right.
On October 30th, at 6:30. That's a gentle reminder for everybody, look forward to that. So moving on to our next agenda item, which is a quick check-in on schedule and future topics for the comprehensive plan, I assume?
Yeah, we've had conversations about some things and references been made of. When the next discussion, discussion would happen. I had previously assumed that you would be meeting on the 26th and on the 30th. I got a question, or when Asim emailed me earlier today to say he couldn't be here, he said something that made me think, oh, well, is anyone thinking that maybe instead of meeting, we are going to have both meetings, right? Okay, that's just clear.
I was, I was planning for meetings.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I had been.
I think we should.
So then I guess the question is, what topics are of the things?
Because we're only going to have one meeting in November, right?
Yeah, it's often the case that it's just one meeting in November.
Yeah.
And sometimes you've, you've moved things to be the first and third in November to avoid Thanksgiving.
Since we're having the retreat, I think that will be challenging to do.
Yeah, so at this point.
Make sure we meet on the 26th.
Okay, so the meeting on the 26th, there will be the meeting on the 30th of October and at this point, we're thinking one meeting in November.
I think so.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, I was assuming it was an additional meeting rather than a replacement of the meeting.
Okay, so as far as topics we, we haven't addressed yet, is there anything that jumps out to you as?
Well, we haven't gotten into the utility aspect of growth and that may be something you want to wait until Perry and Dick have had a chance to talk further and see how those numbers mesh with the growth numbers or, and it's also, I think, a little quick to get all the things from water and sewer and so forth.
Transportation.
Transportation is a Kate topic, it's a big topic.
It's a big one.
Education.
Could be a good one, too.
And.
What was that piece?
It's a good question, I need to.
Did we do natural resources?
Oh, you haven't done natural resources and that's the other biggie and it seemed like maybe that would be a function of whatever comes out of the meeting of the retreat.
Right?
Right.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should hold on that one until, so education, whose name is on that, do you know?
I'm not sure, but I know Kate is transportation.
Okay.
Education, I, I'm not sure that that had a name, that might have been one of the few orphans.
Open ones, okay.
But I'll, I'll confirm that, I think I can do that on the laptop. But no one here is remembering that they were assigned.
I don't, no, I don't recall who.
I think both of the ones that I've owned have been pretty small and they've both passed, so I could take a lead on that. It is in my background experience.
He is an educator.
So the transportation piece that, there is the Bay Road group that has.
Yes.
Express interest, I, you know, I don't know if you want to discuss how you would want to be taking their input, they've submitted some material.
Do they know that there's like 10,000 bucks a year, every year for the next six years to improve that corridor?
Well, that's in the proposed capital plan, I don't know if they have been, if they've been competing.
But it's a good data point to share that, yeah.
That's planned.
I think in the spirit of transparency, that's an important thing to, they've been very engaged and I think it's important to.
We need to appoint another committee.
Encourage. No more.
No, that committee could be a committee down there to design their own.
No, 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 no more committees for the time being.
Bay Road.
And just, we were talking about.
Let's say education.
Is there having duck lines now that are being put up?
I don't know if Kate has the bandwidth to get ready for transportation.
It would be kind of a, well, unless it's really focused on just that.
Specific input. I guess we could do that, right?
Yeah, I think that.
If they're available and ready to come in and with the expectation that we probably won't get much beyond.
Yeah, and I think that when their material is discussed, you'll also have representation from the pads committee because there's a bit of yin and yang there.
Sure, let's do that. I mean, it's timely, they've provided input and we have it in front of us and we can react to it and hear them. So education, transportation, that, that piece of it, specifically Bay Road, right? Is that enough for?
Well, what does the commission?
We want to pick back up historic cultural resources, but I don't know if, we don't necessarily need to do that on the 26th. I want to give Andrew, if he's going to pick up education, I want to give him enough time to.
Okay.
Work through edits.
You'd be talking education on the 26th.
So we're talking about doing.
That would be my heavier short-term lift and then circle back to storage.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
Just not to pile it on him.
Yeah, I had the impression from the discussion tonight that neither of the things we talked about would be up next time, we would just.
Yeah, I think so, right?
But I also think that the changes in the historic section are.
They're pretty modest.
It's not going to, it's not going to be a huge time suck.
Addressing that necessarily.
Okay, transportation, education.
You'll have to share the education piece with me and then I can start checking editing.
Is that good?
Yes, the last question I had, since it had, had been raised, telecommunications, is there, I don't, we haven't called that out separately, do you want to?
I was, when I saw co-location, my mind immediately went to telecom instead of renewable energy.
Yeah.
Is it awkwardly positioned now? Is it jammed into a section that doesn't make that much sense?
It, it's kind of weird, I mean, it's, yeah.
It makes sense, yeah, I mean, let's split it out, right? I mean, I'm happy to take the lead on that one, too.
And, and maybe it's just to figure out how it would be folded in to the utilities piece. The thing about the utilities piece is that, and a lot of the emphasis on the utilities that the town itself is responsible for, we're not responsible ourselves for the telecommunications piece, so there's this kind of public-private split, which may justify not having it in which may justify not having it in that growth section.
Right. Let's look at it, right? It's a pretty self-contained section that we can at least address.
Yep.
And it's probably in the wrong place right now, like that noise policy.
I think we just put it in the place that at the time, people thought would have the most impact on two forty-eight.
Yeah. Okay, good. So we have a plan. Next item on the agenda is updates from staff, and I know we're warm to talk briefly about the form-based code.
Yeah, and we've, you and I have gone through the list prepared by Brandy. We, I don't know that we've had a chance to loop back to say.
No, we haven't, just for the group's awareness, you know, we did have a conversation and trying to.
Trying to get to the, to the end of that tunnel.
Of the two-point-O engagement there. So a little more work to do, but just know that we're, we're progressing it. And we'll get it finalized in the near future with Brandy.
And then I was going to mention that I've been sending out emails regarding training opportunities, things like webinars. And if there's anything that anybody, I know that Kate encounters these in her work, but if you see anything or you hear about anything that you think others would be interested in, let me know so that I can get the word out.
Great.
Please treat ones looks cool. Signed up for that one.
There's a really good one, I think, on the personalization.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I hope we get details on soon.
Yeah, I did email Claire and she said, stay tuned, that they haven't been worked out yet. But I told her, I said that the chair of the planning commission in Shelburne is talking about making this mandatory, so you've got the, you know.
Well, we spent a good amount of time on it and I think it just dovetails so well with what we're talking about with the natural resources committee, but it just, I think it would be, it's just a webinar.
Oh, it's being coordinated by the Regional Planning Commission in central Vermont and a couple of other partners that I'm not remembering at the top of my head, but.
So it's pretty topical for this area.
Seems like it's on point.
Yeah, Vermont.
It'd be a good one for all of us to, to the extent we have time to, to take a look at. Great. Thanks for that update, Dean. Any other business correspondence? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Q and As.
I got a couple of questions on the last meeting that I watched this morning.
Yes, please, Dick. That's what this is reserved for.
The young couple that were down by the ablings, do we know how big their parcels were?
High acre.
They're par six.
It's big.
How big?
It's over a hundred and seventy acres.
Okay. And I was wondering if we could actually get the actual lot sizes on the, just the red lots.
We can.
On that map, so we could get a better idea of what we're facing.
What we're talking about?
Yeah, how big our little hamlets are going to be.
Mm-hmm. It's a fair request. Is that?
Yeah, that, those are, numbers are in there, so.
Great.
Just doubling back to the retreat, is there any, anything else that the commission can say as far as objectives or desires or goals? The natural resources committee met last night and they just want to know that they have anything that you folks might want them to have or that would be beneficial in the time before the meeting.
Yeah, it's a good question and it begs the question of, we need to get the agenda developed for that, so.
The flip side is there, I can tell you that they are working on a map and the, the future, future land use map that was shared is kind of relevant to it. They asked me to make a map that combines the future land use map with that map of significant areas in the open space plan. So that's one of the tools that they're hoping to use. We also know that, that Ron Bouchard of the Housing Committee wants to use a large version of this. I think that at least some of the folks are thinking it's very workshop-y. So I hope that that's something that we can at least address, but I think they are feeling like, you know, marking up the map and maybe leaving the meeting with.
On the future land use map?
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, we can definitely allocate time to do that. We invited the housing subcommittee, correct?
They are aware of it and invited, and I know Ron has said he will come and I think their minutes said that some of the others are also coming.
Yeah, no, I invited Jessica Brumstead as well, so she's interested in coming. So everybody should put the word out as well on this, I think. If we, it's not a big space up there, as everybody knows, but it's, it's an important meeting. And what I want to do is just pick up the.
Have any energy folks identified? Would that be a good way for them to kind of, or is that totally different?
It seems a little off-topic maybe to me, but.
Yeah, I think you may want to keep it from getting too far afield, but maybe if they just wanted to.
I just meant more like to sit and see kind of what.
Yeah, what the.
Been talked about.
And they're certainly welcome. It's a public meeting.
Well, I mean, there's going to be impacts, right, if people are saying, I want to put windmills, I want to put up, you know, I mean, the energy in rural aren't.
No, it's true. There is a linkage there. I agree.
Like I said, they can say no, I don't have time. I can make it, but.
Yep. Yeah.
I mean, if we, if someone had said yes, I want.
Yeah.
Throw it out to them.
Yep. What I thought I'd do, Dean, is just pick up the minutes from that last joint retreat we did and then try to sketch out some agenda bullets. That would probably be, unless Gail and Sean had ideas on, yes, we'd like to really get into this type of conversation with the planning commission.
I think their, their expectation is that there's going to be a focused discussion on the future land use map and the rural portion of it in particular. And that there is this interest in the possibility of, well, what is, what other areas that are currently designated rural maybe should be conservation? And then they're also aware of this idea that, oh, maybe some will go in the other direction.
Sure, we can do that. As long as it's not a free-for-all with.
I, well, I hope not.
Having different lines on a map, but yeah, let's, let's allocate time to do that. Okay.
I hope not.
Any other business correspondence?
I just had one comment.
Yes.
In the course of meeting with people and trying to get more businesses in the town, have had both sets of people that have looked into opportunities run into the same issue that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, and that is parking spaces and the number of parking spaces versus what's needed for a specific business. And so I just want to bring that to everyone's attention. There's not enough parking to satisfy the one space for every two people.
Where is that?
One is at the Cafe Shelburne location and the other one was at the old North Face store.
In other words, the.
That space is not, that was never supposed to be retail. That was wholesale, not wholesale. Yeah, it was wholesale. It was a warehouse. He brought it in as a warehouse. He changed it.
Well, whatever it was, there was interest from somebody potentially moving a diner there and having it attached. And it was a parking issue versus number of seats in the diner. And then on the Cafe Shelburne thing, having a.
Requirements to burdensome, in other words?
Well, there's just not enough parking spaces. Yeah, it's the combination.
Cafe Shelburne used to lease a small parcel in the back for.
And the concern, and the concern, and I understand this couple's concern, if they're going to outlay half million dollars for the space and renovate it and all of these things, they don't want to be beholden to somebody to say, hey, you can, you can rent these spaces, but then maybe not. And so I just wanted to bring this to everyone's attention that like.
Point to bring up and something that we come in and out of as a commission in, in various places. So I'm, I'm happy to do what we can to.
I think that it's good that these guys are on the growth, because I know where Dick has come from in the past, at least regarding parking. And so if there was a way that you guys had come to a meeting in the mines.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen this.
That's what I think, but I don't know.
I'm not saying build more, I'm not saying build more parking lots. I'm saying like, let them open the business and if people park a mile down the road, they can use those beautiful new sidewalks we just built.
That would be good if it wasn't something like what's up on the hill.
What's up on the hill?
Restaurant that was put in without enough parking and that's caused the serious safety problems with people parking in the vineyard and crossing the road. And now the town is in a position where we're going to have to spend money to redesign that highway because we allowed the business to go into an area that we knew was not suitable for.
But think about all the people that are now coming off of buses and coming to the, the pizzeria and coming to the brewery as part of a brew tour and Fiddlehead is growing and it's, it's exactly what we want. We want a growing business and it's a good problem to have that.
Problem with them being in Shelburne. I have a problem with us putting them in lots that are not suitable for that. And that business should have gone somewhere else. It's, the product is great. And I think they would have survived anyway, but maybe it should.
Glad you guys are tagtaming that section. I think it'll make for good bedfellows.
No more people, just more pizza and beer.
Again, these are good problems to have, so, but I, well, well noted on that. Thank you for the input and thank you for the outreach. I think it does tie into the economic development section, frankly, so let's, let's not lose sight of that. With that, I will consider a motion to adjourn. Moved by Dick?
Seconded.
Seconded by Jason. All in favor? Aye. Thanks, everybody.